I am the official providing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would convene as the Walworth County Plan on zoning Board. Is there any old business? New business?
Hearing none. I'll move for a hearing then.
Okay, got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion passed. I convene as the Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there any old business? New business? Hearing none. I take a motion. Got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion passed. I would convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Vote for him. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about?
I would like to straighten something off that I heard after I got home. I was gone for a while. I did not comment to anybody that Scott Schilling or Rebecca Cryin called me and asked me not to come to this meeting. That was never said. I never told anybody that. I did say I had a phone call from someone that said they had talked to a county employee and they said I had no right to speak at the meeting during the agenda. And I said, "Well, I didn't think that was the case," so I did call Pierre and ask if during a discussion I was able to speak up. And Pierre said, "Yes, I could speak up during a discussion or during an item on the agenda as a taxpayer." But I did not start. I did not see Scott Schilling or Rebecca Cryin called me and asked me not to come. And I want to clarify that.
Anybody else? Okay, has everybody had a chance to go over the minutes of March 20th, 2019? And so I take a motion. You got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
Motion.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion passed. Okay, I take a motion to approve a claim. Everybody's had a chance to go over. Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. We're getting more discussion on that?
Got a question regarding court appointed attorneys. I mean, it seems like every month we're just getting hired and hired. Are those getting, all those getting billed back to the right places all the time?
You have to ask the auditor's office. I don't know. That would be something that would go on the county liens.
Well, Becky, just look at them and re-determine which ones are billed to the state's attorney, which ones are billed to the courts. And then I also work on making sure that the claimants or customers get billed for them. And we do have a QuickBooks for that. So, and then we also coordinate with the Court of Courts when we do receive payments. Some payments come to us, some payments go to them. So as far as, as far as like a circle going around, it's in place. Whether we're getting paid back, I mean, some people are paying them back $20 a month here, $20 a month there. I mean, we are getting a little bit of money back, but not, not as quickly as they're going out.
Are we getting any liens put on their properties?
Yeah, yeah. We get that information coordinated with the Register of Deeds. And they get the information to get the liens on their properties and so forth. And when they make payments, we also coordinate with the Register of Deeds, let them know these are the payments that they're making. So they also keep record of how much they still owe. So should someone does come and try to sell a property, then they are notified by the Register of Deeds that you have a lien on your property and this is what you owe. So, I mean, there's steps in place to try to get that money back.
That is a lot.
Anything else? You got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion passed. Set equalization dates. I visited with Deb yesterday. Why don't we, instead of having a special meeting, she doesn't think there's going to be that many, why don't we just do it after the meeting on the 16th?
That's what she said to me. That's right with me.
Is that fine? We'll just adjourn and take a little break and then come back and do those.
Do we got people set up for who's going to be on the boards, as far as school districts?
Oh, we'll call it the school and the city. Now we don't need to wait in the city. Yeah, we'll have to be something for more of you if there's a mortgage line. All right, we'll just set for the 16th after the meeting. Number 16, confirm motion to approve for full access to online web banking for the sheriff's trust account for Josh and Regina. Don't want to say that one.
Go free then.
I need a motion for that.
I would so.
Okay, got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
What does that all entail? I know really nothing about that.
Justin's right behind you.
Um.
That's somebody with a sick.
Basically gives them access to get, go back online and look at the statements and stuff for, I can't remember how many years, five years or something like that, without having to go pay for copies of all them bank statements, I believe, if they need them. I think that was something that the state auditor had mentioned to them. Trying to go that way to cheapen things up a little bit. If we've got to go back that far.
So you don't have access to them in the sheriff's office? Does none have access to them now?
Not on the website, no. They got to physically go into the bank and get copies.
I see. Okay.
What all goes into that account?
That's the trust account. So payments on bonds, stuff like that. If we take in a Corson County bond, that's going to go in the trust account. Kind of check is wrote from there to Corson County because we get cash that comes in on the bond. So it's just an in and out count, basically.
Anything else?
Who would oversee what, if there's a problem, who would oversee that account?
Um, I believe the sheriff's office is the one that's seeing it right now. It's the executions, the bonds.
Now, Larry, do you have anything to do with that account as far as?
They pay us out of that account.
Yeah.
For pistol permits.
Yeah. Pistol permits, actions, all that stuff comes out of that. That's the only account we have.
Do you balance that account?
I do not. That's the sheriff's account.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else that oversees that account, insurance balance?
That would be up to the sheriff's department.
Yeah, that's my knowledge.
Just like the register of deeds, they have their own account.
Yeah, it's just our account.
The state auditor will probably check it.
Anything else? You got a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion passed. Okay, Highway Department, Highway Super Chat. Blake Friend. Need a motion to approve Blake's wage at $55,000.
So.
You got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
Yes. Who determined that wage? Where did it come from?
Well, the wage was determined when the ad was put in the paper.
That we did not, that this board did not approve.
Ryan was at the meeting?
Ryan isn't this board. This board did not approve that.
Ryan was there when we determined it the night of the interviews. Ryan.
We did not. This board did not. This is $5,000 a year more than Penny was given. She was superintendent and business manager and 911 road something. And now we're paying $5,000 a year more for a personal real experience to do half the job she was doing? I would, I would make a substitute, or I would amend that motion to make that $38,000.
Well, you can put, you can do that. You can just vote on it.
I just did. I made, I amended that motion to make that $38,000 instead of $55,000.
Okay, where would you come up with $38,000?
That's what Penny was getting when she was, uh, business manager, when she was secretary for the, for the highway department. As it sets now, if we approve these two deals, we're going to be spending $47,000 more to operate the highway department, administration in the highway department in 19 than we did in 18.
But are you forgetting about who the other person that was hired with Penny for that same job? Are you forgetting that?
There's no one hired.
Yes, there is. There's a forming. Do you know why?
Let's discuss that.
Do you know why the forming was put in place back then?
Yes.
For what?
To oversee the roads. Penny was highway superintendent and business manager. When she first took the job, she was also landfill supervisor and business manager over there until they hired Ryan.
That's right.
And she relinquished those jobs. So basically, in 2019, we're going to pay wages and benefits, $47,000 more than we did in 2018. Kevin asked last week, last meeting if it was in the budget. I don't think Penny had that in her budget when she done it. I don't know how this board can justify, given our highway superintendent and our landfill superintendent more wages than our sheriff who is on duty 24/7, 365 days a year.
Well, for some reason, that's just how it is. How else you want to? And you have to go through that. I mean, and you could say too that Jamie, the state's attorney, he's not needed to work at 365 days a year. I mean, if you're comparing Jim, then compare them all.
Jamie's job is a little different than highway superintendent or landfill.
I'm not saying it's not. I never said it wasn't.
How can, how can this board justify, given our highway superintendent $5,000 a year raise? And no one else in this county got a raise this year. And he's doing half the work that our previous superintendent did.
To hire somebody to put in that place? The next applicant didn't want, I'm not saying who it was, but he was in the neighborhood of $65,000.
That should have been discussed by this board, not privately someplace else.
Wasn't done anywhere else. It's done right here.
It wasn't done in this board. Not in this room.
You can't talk about names, Jim, in a open meeting.
You talk about wages in an open meeting.
Talk about wages, but you can't talk about people.
And it appeared that someone offered this without the consent of this board.
Well, I don't know if it was. It was, it was discussed in the hiring department.
It wasn't discussed in this meeting. And state law requires this.
But Jim, you voted on it. This motion's been voted on already.
Not to pay $55,000.
Well, better be for the minutes. It was hired.
Get the minutes out and let's see them then.
I don't have the minutes, aren't we?
I don't have those either.
To hire him.
To hire Blake. Nothing was said about wages. I had to call the auditor's office to find out what the wages were.
Well, in the ad, the ad that was on the radio, well, it was, ad was $50,000 plus.
That's, we did not authorize that either, that ad.
I just had a question. How many applicants did you have in that?
Four, five or six.
Does our superintendent have a Class ACL?
I don't think he has one at this moment.
This ad does not say anything about wages in here that I can see.
You got a motion on the floor, then? And a second. Roll call. Kevin.
Which one are we voting on? The $38,000?
Yep.
No.
Do you think that you can amend the motion originally or second?
I'm guessing you can. Jamie didn't say.
You're going to need a motion to amend, and then you're going to need a second, and then you vote to amend the motion. So that's what you need to do first. Right now, there's a motion with a second to amend the original motion to pay the salary.
I'll second that.
You got a motion on the floor and a second. Any other discussion on that? Yeah, we'll, just we'll do a roll call on that, on that motion. Kevin.
We're voting on whether to approve the motion.
Right.
To go to $38,000.
Right.
No.
Mary?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to vote on.
I figured that.
Do we have to go up to $55,000?
Well, what is the recommendation from, from the board that was doing the interviews?
Never did get to us.
I didn't know that. In fact, I don't even know who them six people were when I asked you last night.
I know Ryan was one of them.
I know who they were.
And that should be part of the board. The board shouldn't we know who all had decided for that job? It should have been brought here before you hired him and approved. That's usually how it runs.
Well, it's never, I've never seen it done that way. Let's put it that way.
I've never seen it run this way.
When Josh hires people, I'm just using Josh right now, do you see who he hires?
He don't hire a superintendent.
I'm just asking.
He might hire help.
I'm asking the question.
Pardon me?
I'm asking the question.
Okay, what's the question?
Does Josh show us who he's hiring?
I don't know that.
No, he's elected official.
And he's not hiring a super.
He elected to run his department. This is different.
Well, to me, every time you hire, you hire somebody and it goes through the committee and the committee brings the recommendation back to you, and then you vote on that. You voted on, you voted on the highway superintendent. If you didn't want that highway superintendent, why did you, why did you vote yes?
We voted on the highway superintendent, not the wages. The wages were never mentioned. Never mentioned until I called the auditor's office after the meeting to find out what we were paying.
Well, then I will take a motion to approve Blake Friend's salary at $55,000.
You already have that.
Okay, what are we going to do then? That already been voted on once.
No, what's been voted on is the amendment which went down as a no vote, which then you still have your motion to hire him at the wage that the motion was made, which was the $55,000. We're still at the discussion stage on that.
I know in the interviewing process, one of the things that we talked about was, you know, the wage and where we would set that. And I guess I'm not sure how that whole procedure should go, but, um, that was where we felt that we needed to be to hire somebody to fill that position. Like Scott was saying, one of the applicants was, I mean, he was requesting he was going to be looking more at $65,000. It was just like, that's not even in the budget. So that's where, I guess, when we decided to look at this and recommendation was to hire Blake Friend, was that's kind of the base point where we felt where we needed to go to get a superintendent in there. But, so that's, that's kind of how I would come out with the original out of meetings was when Ryan and all there, we were sitting here talking about that. It's where the base price would be, um, for that position. There's a lot of responsibilities as we all saw this last, this last winter with the snow and everything else. They're, they're playful.
What were the qualifications for that one that wanted $65,000?
He had, yeah, he had an engineering degree. So, I mean, he was, he was definitely qualified, but it was just the fact that the price that he was requesting was out of, out of the range that we felt we were, should be at.
A second.
May I address the board?
Yes.
I guess my question would be, calling Jim, where is the transparency of what's going on with the commission? When we've got commissioners that don't even know what's happening in our county? I mean, yes, you had a special board that selected the highway superintendent, but shouldn't the whole board, our board of commissioners been aware of what was going on?
Well, to my knowledge, anytime, anytime you ever, you have a committee together and the committee brings that recommendation to the board. And I guess I wouldn't, I would say that's exactly how it was done.
Well, the recommendation of the person to be hired, but not the wage. Now you're making a motion how much the wage should be and you already hired your person and he's already being paid that much. And I'm not questioning the person that you hired and questioning the process you used for the wage part of it. Now that he's hired and he's already being paid, now you're making a motion to say this is what the wage is going to be. If that's what the wage is going to be, shouldn't that have been a starting point in the ad so that people aware of what was being offered?
I would say that it's, like I said, it's the process that's, to my knowledge, has always been like that. I don't think when, even like Josh's wage, I don't know if that was ever put in there. I couldn't tell you. I don't know if anybody ever puts the actual wage in there because what if that's not what the wage is going to be? So you would be advertising wrong. So I don't know that the wage is always ever put in there.
Would that have been something that should have been discussed with the board after you decided to hire someone, how much the wage is going to be? I mean, shouldn't our whole commission board know what's going on? I mean, as a taxpayer, I would assume all of our commissioners would know what's going on in the county before the fact.
I thought it came out of the committee that this was the recommendation and this was always going to be. That's what I remember coming out of the committee when it was presented to the board.
Yes, Jimmy, when you hires, you do this position and the wage is going to change, you should have announced that this is the person we're going to hire. And either you put the motion together and say, "We're going to hire this person at this wage," or the commission votes to hire the person, and then the commission votes to set the wage. Which wasn't done till now.
I guess my concern as a taxpayer is if our commissioners that are on the board don't even know what's going on, how are we supposed to know as taxpayers?
I just felt that it was, it was out there that we, what we were doing when we selected somebody.
I thought that's what it came out of the commissioner, out of the review board. This is the recommendation. This is what the wage is going to be. We voted on, approved.
So that was discussed, excuse me, Mr. Chairman Massey?
Yes.
So that was discussed at a commission meeting?
Yes.
With the commissioners? And why are, do we have at least one commissioner that's not aware of it? Yeah, I know, like all the commissioners are aware of it, but I know one has spoken up and said, "He was not aware of the wage."
All right, we need to play the tape back from that meeting that, when it came out of the committee, what was actually said.
You still have to vote on the wage. That's not been done yet. You voted on hiring, whether, because you'd have to look at your minutes, but I don't think there was a motion to set a wage. And so unless you would be going with the original wage that the previous highway superintendent had, you have to vote as a group to set a new wage, which my understanding was not done.
Well, I think we'd have to look back. I believe it was, but.
Then why are we voting out?
I don't know.
If it was already set, then you don't need to vote.
I would say we should table it and review the tapes and see what was actually said from Ryan when it was come out of the committee. And we voted on if the wage was in there or not, because I do not remember if it was in there or not.
It has to be in the motion. It can't be what someone says. The motion has to be to set the wa, the wage at whatever the wage is, or it has to be higher with this wage in the motion.
Either in January, December. 22nd or whatever.
So it should have been on my February fifth meeting then, or?
Do they have, all it has in here is, um, it just has who made the motion to hire. And it just appoint Blake Friend, Shlomer slash Martin, is all it has on that twenty-three. I guess it's your question there.
I would go by the printed.
Minutes?
Minutes.
I don't think they're in there. Or are they?
I guess we're gonna approve Blake Friend's salary.
Well, it should be ready now. Should be in. Amen. What is it saying? Oh. This is just from what?
That's the minutes on the website.
It's on the, um, Shlomer moved and Martin seconded to update Blake, or to appoint Blake Friend as highway superintendent for SDCL thirty-one eleven-one, effective two-one-nineteen, voting aye, five, nay, zero. Motion was adopted. And then it goes into approve, uh, heavy equipment operator raise. But I, it doesn't look like there's anything with regard to his salary. I don't wanna mess this stuff up.
Let's look it up. Let's look back in the quarter.
So right now you still have a motion on to, which looks like is necessary to set the highway superintendent's wage at the motion amount of fifty-five thousand. And you've already had a motion in a second, and you're still at the discussion phase. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Okay.
Just wanna make sure that we're okay.
Any more discussion on that? Here and now, go real call. Kevin?
Yes.
Shlomer?
Yes.
How?
No.
Martin?
No.
I'll break that tie. Yes. Consider motion to approve a wage of Green Olds Act fifteen forty-two as full-time. Take a motion for that.
May I address the board? I, I do have a question. Do you hire people to come in at the same wages of people that are already here, getting paid the same amount?
More.
Or more? I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know.
Everybody said that fifteen forty-two.
So that's set to hire people coming in without a, um, you know, usually if somebody's hired at a job, they're hired and they're put on a probationary period for ninety days, six months, whatever. And then they are hired at the wage coming in. Their first wages are lower, just say fifteen dollars an hour. And if you complete the three to six months, whatever, then you're allowed to have the same wage. And I just wondered if, that's just my question, is do you always hire people to come in at the same wage somebody that's been here five years, ten years, or whatever is getting?
Usually blade operators and that, it's right in there, I mean.
But I mean, secretaries and, is that not what you're discussing?
That's right.
Are you not discussing hiring secretaries or assistants or deputies?
Yeah, like I said, that's how it's always been done.
Okay, I just, that was just a question I had, is they get the same wage? I didn't know.
Seems like what it's always been, in Iowa's office, everybody's offices.
I have hired at the same wage.
Okay, that, that's the only question I have.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve that wage.
I assume.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second. No, sir, you got a second. Any other discussion on that?
This is another position that this board has not approved yet or authorized advertisement for yet.
I guess I'm, you're losing me, Jim, with what take out, put out on, to hire somebody.
Josh can't just go in his office, we, we made that very clear to him when he wanted to appoint his secretary to full-time, and he couldn't do that. When we hired Blake, we had no idea we were gonna also hire a full-time secretary. And we never authorized that position, or?
Well, right here is the ad.
Well, I don't care about the ad, we never, we never authorized it in this, in this meeting. And now we're gonna pay forty-seven thousand dollars a year more in wages and benefits than we did in twenty-eighteen?
What were we gonna do about a secretary?
I'm saying it should have been discussed in this meeting, not out in the alley or wherever it was discussed.
Well, there again, when we all just, apparently you weren't there, but Ryan even said it too, we need a secretary there.
I don't wanna speak for Davis, but evidently he wasn't there either, neither on Main Street or town, uptown.
I'm, I'm thinking it might have been advertised as part-time.
Yeah, I seen, I, that's what I seen in the paper.
Well, it, it was advertised as part-time, um, initially, and then, um, a week later, they advertised as full-time, so it was both out there.
But it was not, I don't know.
I guess my question is, is before you even advertised, did you create the position? Because there was no secretary position, that was gone when Becky took over the highway superintendent, so before you advertised, did you create the position yet? Because like Jim was saying, Josh can't just go hire another employee, that's gotta be approved. You have to create the position before you hire it and post it, and I don't know if that was done or not.
Well, I didn't think it was gonna take too much to figure out that we were gonna need a secretary.
I'm, I'm not saying, that's not what I'm arguing, is you gotta do it correctly and, you know, you're going to hire someone, you gotta create a position for them, and that would be a commission decision. And I don't know if that was done. That's what you're asking, right?
Right.
And before you, um, hire them, you should probably make sure that you have the position created. I'm not saying anything about the person or the, the wage, but I don't know if you have a position created yet. Because I don't think anything's been in the minutes or voted on by this commission to create that position.
Wasn't there discussion whether it was in the budget or not?
You have to make a motion to create the position, whether it's in the budget or not is irrelevant. If you're, just like if Josh wants to hire another deputy, you have to approve that to create the position. My understanding is, is this position hasn't been created yet before it was posted and hired. So realistically, you should probably make a motion to create the position first and then to hire. Because I don't think the position's been created other than discussed.
I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll make a different one to create the position with.
Why do you have to be on the agenda?
Yes.
So that'll have to wait till next meeting then?
I would check to make sure, you might have done it already, I don't know. My understanding is, is it wasn't.
So what do we do, agree now, give her two weeks off?
Uh, that's your decision, you're paying her, I'm not. That has nothing to do with me. I'm just telling you that if you wanna do it right, you have to create the position, then you have to advertise for the position, then you have to hire the position and set the wage. Right now you have an employee that's been working for an extended period of time, and my understanding is, is you haven't even created a position for yet. So realistically, you shouldn't be paying them, and realistically, you shouldn't have hired them yet, because you haven't even created the position.
Okay, my, my question is, why didn't this come out when, uh?
This is the first time this has been on anything. No one has told me anything other than this person's been hired. It's not my job to go and make sure and check everything about what you guys do. All I see is this, it's on the agenda, so now I'm addressing it because he addressed it. If you have questions, ask me. But if you're going to do things without asking me, it's not my responsibility to monitor you. I'm telling you now, the way my understanding is that this is up, I'm not gonna have you make motions and do stuff that's incorrect that we're gonna have to cure in the future, that's why.
So what, what do we have to do to correct that?
You mean you should put on the agenda for next meeting to create the position of a secretary if you haven't done it? My understanding is that position went away when Penny was hired as superintendent, and there was no secretary, because she took over both jobs. So when you create another job and hire someone for it, you have to create that job. Just like I can't go hire another secretary, you have to approve the position, and then you have to approve the hiring. Well, actually you don't have to approve the hiring because I'm elected. But, uh, say in the equalization office, you have to create the position, just like you eliminated one of the positions. So Deb doesn't have the authority to hire anyone additionally, because there's only one position and a additional quarter-time position. In this particular case, if you didn't create the position, you technically can't fund it, because it's not a creative position. So next meeting, you should probably have on the agenda to create the highway, super, highway secretary's position, and then you should have another one who to hire, and then another one approving the salary. Once you change your personnel policy, creating the secretary's position, then you won't have to really worry about the salary, even though you'll have to approve it, but the salary's gonna be set by the personnel policy, because all employees start at the same wages whether, when they're deputies, which is what the fifteen forty-two, which was your question. But right now, this is a position that hasn't even been created, is my understanding.
Even though that was part of Penny's job?
Penny's job was highway superintendent slash secretary. And so if you're going to split the jobs up, you need to create the position. Because right now Blake should be highway superintendent slash secretary, uh, unless you create a different position. And my understanding is Blake was hired as just highway superintendent, not slash secretary.
All right, then I'll withdraw my motion until the next meeting.
All right. All right, then we'll go discussing, discussion regarding advertising. I didn't put it on. Is that advertising for landfill?
I've got no idea, we authorized the last meeting to advertise for landfill superintendent or supervisor, whatever his title calls.
I mean, the ad is out there, so I think they just needed to put a motion to approve advertising for the job?
We had a motion to authorize the auditor to advertise for landfill superintendent or supervisor, whatever.
Okay. Um, I mean, unfortunately, I, I didn't make the agenda. Becky's not here, I'm so in contact her, we need to, but, um, I have another question. Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Okay, if you advertise for a landfill position, do you advertise with a wage, or do you not advertise with a wage?
I think right now it, it just says, um, that the wage depends on the qualifications. There's a lot of qualifications, so.
So if someone that is not certified in what the certification requirements are, they should not get paid what Ryan was getting paid, is that correct?
That's correct.
Or five thousand over.
Well, we're talking, but that's what I...
I guess I didn't hear you mention more.
I just said or five thousand over.
That, that was just my question, because it doesn't have a wage in the advertisement, and I guess being, that's all being discussed, that's a question I have.
Anything else? Old business.
I was gonna ask Amanda how we're coming up with the emergency declaration. How, how we come up with emergency declaration, are we getting everything?
I guess, did you guys, I was gonna say, did you, um, send it into the state? Because I submitted it to my regional coordinator, um, to get it included into the state so they have information on it and everything, but as far as the paper one goes, I was under the assumption that it was the auditor's office that sent it off to the state.
Yeah, basically, uh, the request originally came from Amanda through emergency management, that all of the surrounding counties were doing emergency declarations, and in order to make sure that we don't lose any exposure that we would have to federal funding or federal relief or state relief, that we would need to get that emergency declaration made. So then we had this special meeting and voted on approving the declaration. So the main thing is, is I think a lot of it is Amanda sending that declaration through her channels, because that's where most of that funding is going to be made, and she would be the point of contact, so I think we're okay there. And then also, as long as we have it recorded, which we do, that we had a special meeting to approve it, and that it was approved, that resolution, I think we're okay. And then I don't know if it was sent to peer, but I would assume that the main agencies that we need to have involved in knowledge of it is through the emergency management.
Right, and I did have it sent electronically to all my people that needed it, so, um, it's out there, it's working. So until the state actually submits the big, because we're all going in as, as a state, as our region.
Are we, are we starting to track how many overtime hours the road, the road department has, and start getting the list of all that compiled?
Well, I'm hoping that, you know, the highway department is doing that, I guess. Um, I have to talk to Blake, I know that I've been out taking pictures, um, and monitoring that, and jotting down where I'm starting to hear, you know, any of the flooding. I've had, I've handed out sandbags already to people, um, in, in just preparation of that, um, so I know that...
Keeping records of all that?
Yeah, I have all that wrote down. So it's just kinda, I guess, you know, we're still getting all the information in from everybody, as long as I know about it, but...
Just as long as everything's being tracked, because the last time, there wasn't a lot of that, was not tracked.
No, it's all getting...
Blake's got a sheet that he must have got from the state, showed you, and he's, he fills them out all the time on everywhere. He's got, I wouldn't wanna guess how many pictures he's got, but he, he has a paper, and he tells exactly the location and all that. He's recording everywhere, you know, roads are washing or flooded, or no matter what it is, he's, he's got that all wrote down in pictures.
So as of right now, yeah.
Kinda what you'd want.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly what I was talking about. I mean, Blake will have his documentation, everything too, and I'll get together with him and get all his. And, and we're doing, just like we did with the, the snowstorm, we're mapping it, you know, putting it on a map, so we know where the roads are starting to, to wash out, or the water's running over them, or anything like that, so.
Got any culvert issues going on yet, or that we're gonna replace, or?
Um, I guess, I don't know about...
Placing, but there's gonna be a lot of work done, a lot of culverts that are silted in.
We need a lot of maintenance on our culverts, is what I'm finding.
I guess another thing that, if you're a commissioner and you are going out with any highway department people, you should contact Amanda when you find something. She needs to be kept in that booth, but anyhow, I was over at Moore's yesterday, so there, I said, there's a lot of culverts, it's gotta be... But anyhow, I was over at Moore's yesterday, so there's a lot of culverts that got to be cleaned in the ditch.
I know that one that needed work, yet done the spring, those ables. And doing those ables, that's starting to wash out around the sites of it.
I didn't know that, too. And we kind of figured, I think, that that-
I guess that there was work that had to be done afterwards.
Yeah, because it wasn't completely, I don't think it was completed yet. And then the weather came in. So yeah, now we're starting to see, yeah. So now we're kind of back probably pretty much square one of the dirt works, I think it looked like, so. So yeah, no, there definitely needs to be culverts addressed. But trying to stay up to it. Most people let me know and communicate with the highway department. Because they're going to see it before I see it, if I don't hear about it, so. Just trying to stay on, but yeah, we're documenting it.
Thanks, Amanda. And Jim, I want to just talk about one thing that you brought up last week about that CAT warranty, that warranty on a blade. Well, I called you and I called Kevin about that because we needed to know right now. But did you know that the reason with that blade is, is that was supposed to be a seven-year buyback blade? Penny chose not to. That's what's with that blade. There was no difference in it. We would have, say, we'd have sold that blade this year. Buyback was 150,000. We wait two years to buy back and still 150,000.
I would like to see that extended warranty that we have on that. I've heard a few people ask me about it, and I've got no idea. Yes, you talked to me, but it should have been brought up and approved unless we did.
Well, but like I said, the price is not going to matter with that blade. But it was a seven-year contract. Kat said, we don't understand why you guys did that. We didn't do that. Anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. And yes, I did call you on that.
So if it was a seven-year warranty, why did we have to buy an extended warranty?
Because Penny put it as a five-year. All blades were five-year buybacks. That was a seven-year. Penny chose not to.
Now, in two years, we could buy two blades.
So if she would have, you can, if you want to call it point finger, whatever, but what I'm saying is, we paid, when we bought that blade, and that blade was purchased. If she had took that seven-year warranty, we wouldn't have had to buy that two-years on it. It was on that blade. She took and decided to put it at five-year. Are you following what I'm trying to say there? That's why. So it was, it cost two years for that blade. And warranty was already on that blade. But Penny worked the contractor, was not for that, so. Any other old business? New business? Oh, sorry.
Need to address the board again?
Yes.
Clarification, I guess I should add, just about when we were talking about the secretary's job. But if you're going to make a motion to advertise for a full-time secretary, we already have one. So does that mean somebody else can come in and apply if they want a full-time job as a secretary of the highway department?
The applications were out there. I'm not following you, I guess.
If you're making a motion to make it a full-time job, you already have somebody hired. But does that mean that being just being opened as a full-time job that gives someone the right to come in and apply, even though you already have somebody hired? When you didn't have the position, is what I'm asking.
Well, Jamie had to answer that question because the process was already done. The application was put out there. And if anybody wanted to apply for that job, why wouldn't they have applied for that job then?
Where was the ad that was put in for full-time? Maybe the ad that I saw, the papers there, that doesn't say.
I don't think this number was put in.
Well, I know that was in the papers.
It should have started as a full-time. I mean, half-time, half-time.
Yeah, I mean, we've got the papers there. I'd have to go through them. But I know that, you know, I saw. The first one was part-time, and then it came back the next week. And then they changed it to full-time. But I'd have to find the advertisements.
Well, then I'll go back there again. Who hired that secretary or went through the applicants was Blake and Ryan. They're the only two that did it. And Ryan is the one that called that. My guess is what it was is because they weren't getting the applicants for it, so they raised it down.
Well, I know so. People had signed up and applied for a half-time. And then come back and told me that they hired a full-time one. And I didn't even know it was advertised or we'd hired anybody.
I don't even know who was who applied for it. I have no idea. I didn't look at it. I don't think it was my job to look at who they were.
I think it's everybody's job to look at who's we're hiring. And it just doesn't make sense at all.
That's what you got to maybe for.
No, I think that's why you have the issues.
It would be my understanding that being that position, we're going to create it. That position is in the highway department. That would be up to Blake to fill it. The same as it's up to Josh to hire a deputy or a jailer or Jamie to hire a secretary.
And Blake to hire somebody.
That would be my understanding. It would be Blake's job to hire someone. But we have to create that position first.
Blake did do that.
What's that?
The same thing we do. You vote. That's approving.
Yeah.
Blake is the one that did it.
But we have not created the position yet.
I understand that.
So after we create the position, it would be my understanding, it would be up to Blake, that supervisor, to determine whoever he wanted to put in that job.
Yeah, that's fine, but it's like, this commission is doing things backwards. I mean, you've already hired somebody full-time, and now you're going to make a motion to have this position full-time. Because when it first came on the paper, the ad that's right there, it does not say a full-time job. And for the taxpayers in the county, I mean, it's difficult to find a full-time job with benefits. I'm sure that there would have been people that have been, would have stepped forward to say, hey, I'd like a chance at this job if I knew it was full-time. I don't have a question with the highway superintendent filling the position or that's, or who was hired now. I don't know. I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning the process that's been used to fill this position when there wasn't even a position. And like Commissioner Hulke said, the amount of money that's being spent for these two positions compared to what was spent before, was it, is it in the budget? I mean, is there a budget for that, or where is that coming from? As a taxpayer, I'd like to know where the money's coming from.
Fair question. I'd say it's going to be very close.
What's going to be close?
In the budget.
I know Blake Penny, next to 47,000 in her budget. I would just about bet dollars to gold if she didn't. And wages and benefits, that's what it's going to cost us in 2019 over 2018.
Anything else?
Yeah, we have a rookie put in there visiting as information officer for veterans about over a month ago.
I think it was a week and a half ago. I think that's when I heard it, I think.
Yeah, well, I know he's been here. We've had, it's probably our third or fourth meeting since he's done it. And he's asking me about it. I think we should probably decide who we should be getting or working on it. Because it's going to be hard to actually fill. So we're kicking that bucket down for a few months.
I did not hear it till it was a week and a half ago, when I heard it about.
Do you have a record of his resignation? It won't be different. You just got to do something. Turn it into the auditor, right?
Yes.
I am waiting on a recommendation. I know Legion and VFW are, they both know about it.
Did you notify the American Legion?
Yeah.
What was that?
Well, I didn't, I didn't personally do it, but the guy I talked to, I asked him if he would be interested in doing it. He said that they are already talking about it. They're waiting on to see if this guy is their recommendation. Is this guy, they're waiting to see if he-
What recommendation?
I'm not going to give out names here. Boy, yes, I will. I will. Just for you, Davis, I will. Justin Moche.
Okay, what about Justin?
I asked Justin if he'd be interested in it. He said that he doesn't have the time to do it. But he went to the Legion and VFW. They both agreed on this other guy. I don't know, he didn't give me the name of this other guy.
I happen to be going to the Legion and Justin did not ever come to a meeting with any names.
So they said they both agreed on it.
There are a couple people out there that are very good thinking about taking the job. But they probably won't get a chance then. Justin's going to, so I think maybe we should have a little committee that time and have it approved by the whole board. And check for qualifications. But that could probably be wrong.
Okay, so what do you want to do? You want to open it up?
I think we should probably at least start advertising or something for it before it gets to the last week.
Okay, so.
I mean, it's never too early.
When do you want to have set the deadline?
The deadline? It's June 1st. He's leaving.
Okay. We got three months or two months.
You want to make that into a motion to authorize the auditor to advertise for that position?
Yeah, usually that's the way it is, isn't it?
Well, I know Jamie's not here to make sure that we do it right, so maybe we should wait for Jamie to get back here to do it.
Evening court, I've got no idea how long it'll take. Must not be too long, because he left his folder here.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting.
I walk by the jail. I see another town's boat is broken. It's running back against the building, but we'll let that go because no maintenance is being done. I think we should start thinking about maintenance. And about getting our prisoners back, get some money going. Don't even talk about that anymore. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, I'm just going to address this right now. I don't know if this is, I'll say it. I don't care if I'm on camera. If this is a pissy match or what it is. But then, if you see something wrong, then why would you not go to Justin or Josh and say, there's a problem over there? Who was supposed to take care of that? Okay, but who's supposed to take care of that?
I don't know.
You should adjust to Justin or Josh. I'll tell you. I would say you should talk to wherever that building is at.
Okay. I can do that.
Any other new business?
I got one question. Does anybody else find it odd that we haven't got a report from the landfill since July? I think July was the last one that I, I got.
Ryan gives them all the time. Talking about-
I haven't got one on my email for July.
Ryan handed it to me, so Ryan hands it to me, so I see it all the time.
No, I haven't seen it.
I'm saying, it is every month. Ryan gives us one every week.
I don't know, but we've approved it last few months.
Gives it all to us when, gives us what's owed out there. All in that, all same report. Usually mine, I get about three pages, four pages.
Yeah, I haven't got one for a long time. And I don't, I don't remember approving them in our meeting lately. Maybe if you guys got them, just didn't come in on my email.
That's why I get mine on paper. I don't trust, I don't trust those things.
Mine's in my other email.
Ryan is very religious about getting them.
He would, but like I said, I haven't got one for a long time.
Yeah, because when we ask him about what's owed out there.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Talk about on the, yeah. That's when I get my report.
I'll look back in the minutes and see. And I don't think, I think it was like August last night.
Here's one from November. I got, we got one from November.
You do? It's been, it's been a while anyway. I'll have to-
Yeah, there's one from November. I have to look back.
I didn't look back in the minutes to see, but I know I haven't got one for quite a while.
That was, that was November given to us December 26th for the November meal.
Yeah, maybe mine just didn't, didn't get there or something, but.
Anything else in new business?
I just want to clarify, if we're going to follow the personnel policy on the holidays for Easter? State is closing on that Friday and that Monday, 19th and 22nd. Are we going to follow what our personnel policy says? And close, or not?
No, it's closed on Friday.
So if we're going to change that, we should change the personnel policy as what Ryan had mentioned before. There's no one else showing up after.
What's the commission feel?
It's in our personnel policy to follow the state. We had this discussion at, what was it, Thanksgiving time or?
Yeah.
New Year it was, when we had this discussion.
It doesn't matter to me. I just need to know what we're going to do.
So we're going to close Friday and Monday both?
And that's what our personnel policy says. We had this discussion when we were talking about closing at New Year's. Jamie brought it up. This is what our personnel policy says. If we're not going to do that like 9/11, we need to change it.
Then that's what we'll do, is follow the personnel policy.
Alright, so we're, so I have to put it up on the board. So we'll be closed that Friday and the following Monday.
Yes, Carol.
I have a question. Are we in new business?
Yes.
Who reports to Katie Zerr of what, you know, for her article that she writes in the paper?
Ryan and her are used to. Ryan would talk to her. Otherwise, Katie watches the video as far as I know. I don't know who else talks to her. You mean, you wondered if one of us sitting near this table talked to her?
Either one of you or one of the people from the auditor's office or what?
I couldn't tell you who.
No.
No? Because she, she addressed that she had talked to some employees. And they felt, you know, how they felt. And that's why I was asking. I don't know who reports to her.
I don't, I don't think anybody, of course, did.
There were quite a few people out there that day, so.
I mean, I don't know. I just, that was my question.
Does she watch that video then before Ryan gets it posted?
I don't know what Katie does.
Because sometimes, you know, it was a day or two before Ryan gets it posted and the paper comes out tomorrow night.
Well, Ryan, I know, talked to Katie.
I knew, I knew that, you know. I've got no idea how she-
I have no idea.
Find out what she knows.
I guess it's none of my business with how she gets the information she does. Nobody else does. The American News doesn't. They're, they're never, they're not here, so.
Yeah. Well, most papers are biased on one end, one side, or the other, so I don't know. That was just a question I had.
No idea. Any other new business? Here now, I take a motion adjourned. Motion on the floor. I need a second. A second. Any more discussion? If you have any on the paper, say aye.
Aye.